Okay, it's 5:30, and so we will begin. And if you bow with me, I'll offer a prayer. Father, we do thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for this time that we can gather and go about the city's business. Father, I ask that you'd give us wisdom. Father, that you would give us a spirit of cooperation. Father, that everything that we do would be in keeping with your will. I ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Call this meeting to order. First thing, I'm sorry, we'll rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for citizens to speak about items not listed on the agenda. In order to address the city council, please complete the open forum form and submit it to the city secretary. We do have one of those this morning, or this afternoon. Comments are limited to three minutes per person, and open forum is limited to five citizens who submit an open forum form. So for open forum, we have Lisa Mize.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa Mize, 820 Texas Street. And I come to talk to the council this evening about a concern I have about the political signs that I've seen being put up around town. The packets that the applicants receive calls for the signs to go up no earlier than 60 days in advance of an election. And I did print this off for each of you. And while Jan passes that out, my concern is that over the past two years that I've been at the council, there has been a lot of conversation about the quaintness of our community and about zoning. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But just that we want to stay charming. And then there were things about ordinances and loud noises and blah, 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 blah. So anyway, when I saw the signs going up early, I remembered back when I ran for school board several years ago. I had friends who wanted to put my sign up early. And I remember going to the guidelines, and it specifically had a time when I could and could not. So I told my friends, no, you know, we have to hold off. And then when Jimmy ran, the same thing happened. People, you know, were eager to put signs out, and it was our responsibility to make sure that the signs didn't go out early. And so I just feel that it's really important. I think, you know, we do, we have this charge with the city plan and the downtown plan that we want to keep everything quaint and charming and blah, blah, blah. And I just feel like that this goes against that. So on your packet, I ran off, there's two spots actually where it says, on the back of the first page, kind of in the middle third down paragraph, I highlight it for you. It says, "Signs may not be placed prior to 60 days before the election." And then it says, "Should be removed 10 days afterwards." And then on that second page, and I'm sorry the page numbers didn't print off, but I believe this is, oh, this is in the second spot. It says, "Dates to Remember." And again, "Political signs may be placed out 60 days prior to any election." And I'll just go on to say, you know, if signs go out earlier, like this time, I think some signs went out in January for a May election. Well, I see Dr. Grauman back here, and I know that there's probably, you know, SD election, there's a hospital board election. So again, it's not just our city signs, but that leaves an opening for all these other signs to be put out. And it could just be signs are up all the time. And then that goes against what we're trying to say, that we're a quaint, you know, little town. And then, so once you look at that, I know I was told, well, it's an ordinance and it can't be...
I'm sorry to interrupt your time just about up.
Okay, it can't be, it can't be, it can't be enforced. Well, anyway, when you look at this, will you also look at the size of signs? Because on this street, this is one of the ones in questions for quaint, charming. And it has this huge sign there. And maybe we should think about yard signs. And yard signs are in the yard and not large signs. Thank you so much. I think you get what I'm trying to say.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we will move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Are there items to be removed?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, my iPad died. Thank you to Mr. Donnell for having a charger here for me. If we could remove items C, D, and F, please.
Okay, C, D, and F, all right. Anyone else, is that anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the remaining items?
I make a motion, we approve the remaining items.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we will move to 5C. Consider approval of a resolution supporting Texas Opioid Abatement Fund Council and Settlement Allocation Termsheet, which release claims of the city against certain defendants in the Texas opioid MDL. City Attorney.
So this is a continuation of a series of settlements that we've already entered into. For the AG, along with a number of other AGs, has done a national action against opioid manufacturers and distributors for creating an opioid epidemic. The settlement is chunks of money that go to various political subdivisions. If you join into this settlement, which we have done in the past, you didn't have to put up all your attorney's fees and what have you to prosecute it separately. Plus, you get part of the overall settlement plan. The overall settlement plan is a payment of blocks, big chunk of money to a central pot that gets allocated to the states. And then the states have an allocation system down to the local participating subdivisions. We are, one of the political subdivisions is participating. This round of settlements will be just under $200,000 from Walgreens, CVS, Walmart, and one manufacturer whose name I'm forgetting at the moment.
To us.
To us, yes. Now, the money that we get needs to be used on something related to the opioid epidemic. And there's a lot of possibility there, including some forms of spending money on interdiction. Narcan is one of the big, big items that they're being promoted is so that you can prevent opioid overdoses and having those rapidly available. Had some discussions with the district judge about possibly using our money to fund a pilot program for a drug court, which would be another way of using that that's approved. We are still in early stages, and of course, we don't have the money yet, so... But that's a good way to spend the money without us having to create a program or staff it. But that's what it's all about. So, yes, I recommend it.
Thank you. I just wanted to have a little more than what was in our package, just so I, because I know that we've joined these in the past, and I wanted to make sure that I was up to date on where we were and what it really meant, particularly dollar-wise. And I think a drug court would be a fantastic idea. I make a motion, we approve item C.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay, moving to D. Consider approval to purchase a hydro excavation trailer from Kenlok Equipment and Supply for an amount not to exceed $80,088.
Jason Smith, Utility Construction Manager. It's just, it's an item that we had budgeted prior for this year, and this unit became available. The hydro excavation trailer is high-pressure water combination with high-suction vacuum system so that we can dig smaller holes to look for existing services, existing lines, the new fiber optic lines and things that are going in the ground currently. We don't want to damage them. And so this is a way for us to look at them without digging with a backhoe or something that's more damaging. The, that's the primary function of it. There are also some other functions of it, obviously, that can be used within our daily work. And so it's a, it's a good model, good equipment. It's the right size that we're looking for.
So there were really two, two points I wanted to make with it. The first one is that we're not going to have to do a budget amendment. We're, we budgeted for this.
Yes.
And I really wanted to know exactly what the, the equipment did. And I thought that that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure, and I appreciate you coming and sharing that with us.
Yes, sir.
And there's only one bid, but it's because it's coming from the buy board?
This is on buy board. It is government contract. And so it is, it's all covered through that, that process, so. Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve that item as well.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll go to F. Consider approval of a resolution closing East Main Street for the annual Nacogdoches Main Street Wine Swirl Event, April 1, 2023. Interim City Manager.
Yes, sir, Keith Kiplinger, your interim city manager. The Wine Swirl is scheduled for April 1st. It's a great event for our downtown businesses. We have 13 wineries, I believe, that are, no, I'm sorry. I believe it's 19 wineries that are already signed up this year. And we're selling tickets. And this is just a typical resolution that we have to do to get the road closed.
So if I'm not mistaken, just a couple of questions. The first, I think this is the first time we've had a road closure resolution since I've been on council. Maybe one before. How often do we typically have to do these sorts of resolutions?
So, so we close the, the main street or state highway several times a year for, for Wine Swirl, for Blueberry Festival, for various other parades and festivals. And so I would assume that we do eight to 12 of these a year. What I intend to do is, in March, all of those pre-scheduled events that we can, put one resolution together and bundle them so that we're not considering them one at a time and we don't run up against a time deadline like we did on this one.
So what, what are TextDots' timeframes for getting these resolutions? How long does it take them to enter into the agreement after we adopt the resolution? What is, you say we're back up against a timeline. So what, what is that timeline?
The, the state regulations say that we have to have these submitted more than 30 days prior to the event.
So we're close.
We're close, but we're there.
Okay. And then the last question I had, I, I went to TextDots' Road Closure Manual just to...
Wow.
No, not wow. But it says that we can adopt these resolutions and enter into multi-year agreements if the events don't change substantially. Does that mean doesn't change by date? Or doesn't change like the amount of closures we do? So if we could do a multi-year agreement, why not do that? For things that we know that will happen.
Absolutely. So, so we are looking into that. Those multi-year agreements are pretty common. But we do want to make sure that, because the Blueberry Festival float, the date floats a little bit just because of, it's the same, it's the same weekend every year, but the date does float. And so, so any of those that we can to do, you know, two or three years out, it would make good sense to just get them on the schedule. There will be onesies and twosies that show up during the year. But if we can put that, that eight or 10 items that we know are going to come up, once we identify them, we should be doing that. Hopefully, we can do, do that once a year from now on.
I mean, if it's on the consent agenda, it doesn't take up a ton of our time. But, but still, just to have one less thing to read through and just do it once.
Well, it would be, it would be much more efficient for staff to write one resolution than to write eight resolutions, so.
That's all the questions I had. I make a motion that we adopt the resolution in item F.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel, any other comments? So, Bellinger, you have anything? You looked like maybe you did, so I was just taking...
No, I'm just looking forward to the Wine Swirl. Thank you for everything.
All right. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mr. Interim City Manager.
So we will move to the regular agenda. Public, open, an open and public hearing to consider a request for approval of a zone change from A agricultural to R1 single-family for approximately 2.7 acres of land located along the eastern boundary of the city limits, being part of a 64-acre tract conveyed by HGT Group LP to JPSC Development LLC, as described in warranty deed dated March 22nd, 2022, and recorded in Clerk's Document Number 2022-3135 of the Real Property Records of Nacogdoches County, Texas. This request has been submitted by JBSC Development, Case File ZON 2023-01.
Thank you, Mayor. Elena Helton, City Planner. Yes. This is a 2.7-acre tract located along the eastern boundaries of the city limits. It's part of a larger 61-acre tract located just to the north. The remainder of that 64-acre tract that you see as R1 was rezoned last month. This piece would have been included, but it was still outside the city limits. But it was annexed earlier this month, so now it's eligible for zone change. So the applicant is wanting to match the zoning to the other tract so they can develop a future residential subdivision. The future land use designation is zone rule. These are typically for areas that are sparsely populated with little development, but are transitioning into more urban areas. This property is also part of a proposed subdivision that was approved as a 380 agreement with city council last year. So this is in furtherance of that economic development agreement. These are some site photos of the property. Again, the subject property actually doesn't have direct road access now. So this is the end of Park Street, where you will be able to access the property into the future. And this just shows you where the entrance would be into that future subdivision. Again, there's a zoning sign that we place on all of our properties with zone changes. This is the actual subject property. So you see, it is very undeveloped. But again, the plans are to develop it for a future single-family subdivision. Because of the size of the adjacent tract, we only sent three letters to property owners within the 200-foot buffer. But we did call the Village Gate HOA and also send them, sent them a letter about what was being requested and explained what it meant. And so they were supportive of the request. So again, three property owner notices, and then we also sent a letter to the Village Gate HOA. And these are the conditions for approval of a zone change. We also outlined those in your, in our staff report. The staff finds that it does meet all of the criteria for approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item on February 13th, and they did recommend approval unanimously with no conditions. And so before you tonight, city council can approve the request as presented, approve it with conditions, or deny the request. And Alton Hayes is in attendance, representing the applicant, if council has any questions.
Thank you. As it says, a public hearing. Is there any public comment? Okay. I will close the public, public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Helton or Mr. Hayes?
There's no issues with utilities, right?
No, well, so there are some utilities located on the adjacent tract. But as the property develops, they will extend utilities per our current development codes.
And, and that's part of our Chapter 380 agreement, correct?
Well, typically, actually, it's just part of general development. They have to extend water and sewer and streets anytime they develop a piece of property. The economic development agreement provides additional incentives for that extension.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Do I have a motion on A?
I move to approve the zone change as outlined in item 6A.
Thank you. Any, any, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comment? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Thank you. We'll move to B. An open and public hearing to consider a request for approval of a specific use permit for an accessory apartment for lots 18A and 19A, City Block 67, located at 315 East Lakewood Street. This request has been submitted by Lydia Harbor, Case File SUP 2023-01.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Elena Helton, City Planner. This is a request for a specific use permit for an accessory apartment. These are allowed in single-family zoning districts with approval of a specific use permit. This process allows staff, the commission, and city council to review these requests on a case-by-case basis and then impose any conditions that might be needed to mitigate adverse impacts on the neighbors. The property is zoned R1 single-family. The neighborhood is predominantly zoned and developed for single-family uses. But then as you travel west along East Lakewood and get closer to North Street, you do have some commercial and multifamily uses and zoning. Right, the future land use designation is single-family. The specific use permit does not change the underlying zoning of the district or any additional uses, except for the accessory apartment that you're considering this evening. So it is in compliance with the future land use plan. So as part of our specific use permit process, we require a site plan. That site plan gets adopted as part of the ordinance that city council approves. You see on this site plan, they're essentially utilizing that detached garage and that footprint and just expanding it about six feet to the north. And so there shouldn't be a, a large impact on the property. The, again, they're utilizing existing building, existing footprint. And so it should blend in with the neighborhood. The storage building slash garage is about 600 square feet right now. They want to convert that into a 656 square foot, a one-bedroom apartment. And so the applicant, Lydia Harbor, she actually lives at 315. But she plans to move into the new accessory apartment and then have her adult children move into the main home. And so there won't be any non-relatives or people that aren't related to people that live on the property living in the garage. They're not allowed to have separate utilities. And they can't, again, rent it out to people who are non-family members who aren't employed by the property. We do have restrictions for the size of these accessory dwelling units. So they have to be within 30% of the area of the main structure, which this is. And again, there's limits on, on the occupancy. And so if we find that the applicant is in violation of the specific use permit, once it's approved, we can actually initiate a amendment to the SUP or revoke the SUP, and that would come back to city council and go through the same process with notifications for the property owners as well. All right. So this, this is the floor plan. The main area is 567 square feet. That's where the living, the kitchen, the bathroom is. And then there's a small, about 90-square-foot loft area on the upper level, and that's where the bedroom is. These are the elevations. This is actually designed to blend in with the existing home. It's a similar architecture and design. There are upper-level windows, but those will face East Lakewood. So it shouldn't create any privacy issues with joining neighbors. Again, these are some site photos. You see the main home. You see that kind of similar upper-level architecture in the roof line. That's that detached garage slash storage building that they're going to be utilizing and improving, which we think will actually improve the overall aesthetics of the property. These are just some photos of some of the surrounding land uses. Again, it's primarily single-family. But then you do have multifamily as you travel farther west along East Lakewood. All right, as part of the notification process, we sent nine letters to property owners within the 200-foot buffer area. We did receive one written response, and we did include that in your packet. That was from a resident who was generally just concerned about additional rental property in the neighborhood. And we called her and explained the limits of the occupancy and how restrictive it is. So we just wanted to make sure her statements were received in the staff report and then made public at this public hearing portion. But generally, there was support from the neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting on January 24th, and about nine residents came out, and they were all supportive of the request. And so again, you had 17 notices with one written response and opposition. All right, these are the conditions for approval for a specific use permit. They're the same ones that we look at for zone change requests. And again, staff does find that the request meets the conditions. Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this item on February 13th and did recommend approval unanimously with no additional conditions. And so the applicant is also in attendance. If council has any questions, and with that, I'll conclude our presentation.
Okay. Once again, this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask counsel, are there any questions or comments?
I do have a couple of questions that I already know the answer to, but I want to make sure that I, I ask, and it's public. The use of this accessory apartment, how do we enforce the, the occupants?
Yeah, so if we receive reports that the property is being used outside the parameters of this occupancy, we'll initiate an investigation. We'll start visiting the site, taking pictures, trying to get an idea of the activity that's, that's taking place. We'll, if we find that there is some unusual behavior or is visually indicative that there may be someone else living there, we'll actually reach out to the property owner and request a copy of the lease agreement to make sure there's no other people who are, at least legally, living there. And so based on that, we move forward. We've actually had a couple of homes recently where we've gotten complaints about lots, lots of cars. But then when we get the lease, it's actually a family living there with like six adult kids or what have you. So sometimes it is just a large family, and then sometimes it's students living there. And that's, that's typically our process.
Excellent. And then I guess I'd just like to hear from Ms. Harbor about what her plans are.
Good afternoon. My name is Lydia Harbor. I live in 315 East Lakewood. And I'm ready for your question.
I, I just, I heard you speak at the planning and zoning meeting, and I just wanted you to share with us what your plans are for the apartment. And, and I wanted to meet you because you seem really nice.
Well, it's, my family is very small. I have no family at all. I am the only person surviving for my only two kids. Both are single. I need that place so I can allow my child use the main house. She's single now, but you never know, she might get married. So my older child has a house in Houston. But with this economy, you don't know. He, he already lost his job once, and we have to go through a very hard problem. This mother-in-law house will be used for me. I just had my birthday, and I saw my father-in-law, my mother-in-law, and my mother going through so many problems on their old age. So my kids are trying to see that. So that place would be used right now for her. And in a couple of months, when we decide and she decide what to do, I will use it, and we probably may renovate for me the, the new house and then come back to her. So that will be in the long...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think this is exactly the reason why we do these sorts of things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions or discussion?
Just one question on the objection. There was no comment in the comment section.
Yes, so we called. When we spoke to her, she said her general concern was just increasing leased property in the, in the neighborhood. So whenever they leave them blank, we always call and try to get some verbal confirmation of their comments. So it was a verbal conversation.
Anybody else have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the specific use permit as presented in item B.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. We'll move to 6C. Consider approval of Zion Hill Baptist Church Historic Site Fee Schedule. Historic Sites Manager.
Hey, our city council, I'm Veronica Amo, Historic Sites Manager. At the last meeting, we presented our, our fees for Zion Hill. And I'm here tonight to request approval for the proposed Zion Hill fees. There were no requests for edits, so this evening I can approve for tonight. Or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I would ask for any, any public comment as to this. I know we talked about it last time, but anyone that want to speak? All right. Counsel, any questions or comments? Yes?
I just have one. On the proposed venue fees document, for renting the complete building for the evening during the weekday, you aren't requiring insurance. And my question is why?
Mostly because of the time. It's a less time in the building. But if council would like us to, we can definitely revisit that.
Yeah, I don't think I'm familiar with exactly how that works or the expense. Are you?
Yeah. For the evening, for the complete building rental, right now, we don't have insurance required. We do have the damage deposit. We looked at it, and because there's less time in the building, there's, you know, less, theoretically, less risk of damages. But we can definitely revisit that, and we'd be happy to, you know, require insurance at council's recommendation.
Kind of stepping on yours, but it's kind of a cost thing, I guess. Is it, is it significant or?
The cost of.
The insurance.
No, it's between forty and sixty dollars from what we've looked at. This is an event liability insurance, and a lot of people carry it. And then a lot of the venues we looked at do require the insurance for the rentals of their spaces.
My thought would be, and of course, taking into consideration what we talked about last meeting, particularly council member Bolden's question about nonprofits and community organizations being able to use a space and getting fee waivers and that kind of stuff. I just, you know, four to ten is still a significant amount of time. I understand why insurance isn't required for the basement. That makes sense. But I would just be worried, given the historical significance of the site, plus how much money was poured into the renovation, for there to not, for us to not require insurance for evening things.
Yeah, we can definitely, we can add that in. I don't see that being an issue.
One of the things is, complete building evening, and you have not applicable for insurance. The annex, that's open space, correct?
Yes.
With the hardwood floors?
Yes.
Are you allowed for tables or chairs for that area?
Yes.
And that's why we should have insurance.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we definitely could add that in.
So with the discussion of waiver, fee waivers, would we still also require insurance for a nonprofit?
Yes.
Thank you.
In fact, the insurance should be required even if you grant a fee waiver, especially if the cost is as cheap as it is.
Anyone else?
No. Just originally, even before I saw the pricing list, I was concerned about the price. But it's either in line with what we already have in the city or it's just below. So I'm okay with the pricing. But I definitely think the insurance should be added on.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Are these, this pricing, do you think we will recoup the expenses of the electricity and the air and all that? I mean, are we expecting to kind of break even with the operating costs for the Zion Hill?
So the idea is that these fees will help with the operational costs, but also upkeep. These historic sites have a lot of upkeep to them. So the main reason for the cost is to help with the preservation, upkeep of the house, and also operational costs as well.
Including staffing, I think. As I recall, do you think you all could keep track of the costs for like a six-month period, and then come back in six months and tell us, are we, is it too high? Or are we losing money? Or, you know, I'd really like to have some kind of gauge.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I'm just writing that down.
And then by then, you might know, you might add some other details, you know, like this kind of nonprofit or that kind, you know, you might have more history, and you might want to modify it a little bit. Thank you.
Anyone else? Somebody offer a motion? Maybe would that change if that's what we want to do?
First, I make a motion to approve the proposed venue fees for Zion Hill Baptist Church with the noted change that we will require insurance for a complete building evening.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Right, any discussion? Hold on, do you have something?
Complete building evening, what about basement rental evening? Didn't want to do that one?
So with the basement, they only have, for that rental, they only have access to the basement. They won't be permitted up to the main level. So you're, the space that they have access to, and that risk of damage is isolated to the basement area. So that's not why we're not requiring.
And I guess that could be like a one-hour meeting, possibly, just a community meeting. So the forty would be, I guess, more significant.
The basement area will have less occupancy as well as an isolated area. So you're not going to have the hundred and eighty people in the basement for that rental.
Because only take one person to accidentally damage.
That's true. That's true. So if y'all would like to recommend insurance for the evening, we can.
What'd you say?
I'm good with the motion and the second.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Those in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. It probably wouldn't hurt to look into the insurance rate on the basement rental and just, because, I mean, there is a kitchen in the basement, right?
It's a, it's a food storage kitchen. There's not a cooking, there's no cooking in that kitchen. It's mostly just.
Maybe just look into it. If it's reasonable, maybe come back to us, please.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to D. Receive the 2022 racial profiling report. Police chief.
Good evening. Scott Williams, your police chief. And I am here to present the 2022 annual racial profiling report as required by the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. And I've already sent the report to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement back on January the thirtieth. And so I'm here, I know y'all have read over the report already, and I'm not going to bore you with a bunch of words, but I am going to try to go through some of these stats that we've come up with. The first is demographics for the 2020 census. This is not my data. This is data retrieved from the census. And I know if you do the math, it's a hundred and six percent instead of one hundred percent. And I believe that is due to reporting two or more races. So if we get past that, we're good. Fifty percent of the population for Nakadoches is white, twenty-eight percent is black, and a little over two percent is Native American Asian Pacific Islander. And as I said, six point two percent is two or more races. So nineteen point five percent is Hispanic. So we had eight thousand and, I'm sorry.
Were you looking at that on the screen, Michael?
He hadn't rolled that.
I'm sorry. I'll try to keep up. I'm on racial profiling, I'm on this page right now. I'm trying to multitask up here. No. So we had eight thousand and seven traffic stops, total traffic stops for 2022. And of that eight thousand and seven, we searched approximately ten percent. So I'm just trying to cover some of the highlights because I know I'll be asked later. So out of eight thousand and seven, again, we searched about eight hundred, and I think it's eight thirteen, if I'm not mistaken. So around ten percent of the total number of stops. And I'll get over here. A lot of the reasons for the stop are just breaking up for moving violations and motor vehicle violations. So we get to the search conducted. Was a search conducted? Okay. So there was eight hundred and thirteen, like I said, eight hundred and thirteen searches of the eight thousand and seven, which is a parochial ten point fifteen percent. And of that, four hundred and thirty-nine for black, two twenty-one for white, and one fifty-one for Hispanic. And so after doing the math, overall, you do get a fifty-four percent, a twenty-seven, and an eighteen. But of the eight thousand and seven, you get five percent black, two point seven six percent white, and one point eight nine percent Hispanic. So overall, it's a small amount of searches and out of a large group of traffic stops. And we got to remember, we're basing this off of our population, but we have travelers through Nakadoches, through the corridors. Fifty-nine is a major corridor that runs through the city, and we also have to count those in too, but that goes against our population. So we may have a thirty-something thousand population, but we're stopping vehicles that are traveling through Nakadoches. So we've got to take that into consideration. And so the reason for search, I did this one just to point out, like, two years ago, when I told you the probable cause, and that's smelling marijuana, seeing alcoholic beverages, plain view, things like that. So for probable cause alone, we're looking at sixty percent of the searches were for probable cause. And so that's, that's over half of the searches were because the officer developed probable cause. Now, keep that in mind, because when we go over here to the contraband discovered, then we find out that for the probable cause and the others, that seventy-two percent of black and seventy-two percent of white, the officer did find contraband. So in my, just looking at stats from my point of view and from the chief of police, I'm proud of this because this means our officers are not out here just stopping everybody and searching. They're out here, and they know what they're doing. And seventy, seventy-two percent of the time, they find contraband because they've either smelled it, saw it, or after a search, or after an arrest or an inventory. So that's a C in my book. We're going to try to get better. We'll try to get to a B. But again, that is, I think those stats speak for themselves about the officers that we have on the street. They're very smart. They're very acute, they're very articulate, and they know what they're talking about when they're out there stopping cars and making traffic stops. So with that being said, I can go through the rest of the numbers, but I think I covered most of the highlights, and I would, I would like to field some questions now.
Okay. Good, council questions? Who wants to begin?
I'll start, chief. How are you?
I'm good.
Del Carmen didn't do this, correct?
He did not.
Okay. Who did this?
We did it.
Okay. Internally?
Yes.
What happened with Del Carmen?
We got fired.
Okay.
Last year. Del Carmen's got a, he's got it set up with his insurance that he has to, if, we have to write him a check at a certain time. And if we don't have the check in by that time, his insurance won't let him do our work. And so when I got back from the FBI academy, we had already started the process. We found out that we had to go through the finance department and get three bids and ended up having to do a sole source letter. Well, I called Del Carmen on that, and I said, I just need a sole source letter. If you'll hurry up, we'll try to get this in motion. He got us a sole source letter. I ran it through the tape, red tape, and we didn't make it in time. And so he sent us a nasty email and fired us. We're on the spot.
How rude.
Okay. Well, last, when we had this report last year, I had a few questions and comments, and I have the same ones. Basically, last, last year, and I looked, I found the 2021 one from last year and compared. And so it's pretty consistent with last year. But my concern with last year was, when you look at the search data, the way that it's broken down, and just focus on black and white, fifty-four percent of total stops, right, or, sorry, of searches were black people, is that right?
Right. If I'm on the right page, let's.
I'm sorry, I'm on slide seven. Was a search conducted?
Okay.
Yeah. So fifty-four versus twenty-seven percent. Which, based on that raw data alone, it would look as though black people are being searched twice as much as white people. But my concern with the data is that it doesn't take, it doesn't take into consideration the demographic percentages, which is the same comment I had last year. When you factor in the fact that there are fifty percent white people and twenty-eight percent black people in the, in the community, that makes that number disparity or that percentage disparity larger. I don't know what it is because that's beyond, beyond how I can calculate numbers. But I asked for that data, and I think what happened is that I asked for it before Chief Seavey left, and Chief Seavey presented it, and then Chief Seavey left, and it kind of fizzled. And so I don't, I'm not pointing any fingers at all. I just, I would be really interested to get those, get that, the demographic information percentages built in to what, to the data that we're looking at. So that we can have a clearer picture. Because unless we have a clear picture, I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't know what to say.
All right. So, and that's what I thought I tried to cover here, is yes, it looks like fifty-four percent, but look at the raw number of four thirty-nine, and then go back over to probable cause under that same section, it's three hundred and seven. And so if, you've got a higher percentage of probable cause, and not only that, you also have the contraband and plain view, plus the inventory. If you add those together, your number starts shrinking. And so again, with probable cause, that means we see, smell, or there's something that alerts us that we need to conduct a search without consent, which is a big difference. And so if you've got high numbers, four thirty-nine and three oh seven, as compared to the white, you have two twenty-one and one oh one. And there's where your disparity is, as far as we have to act if we see, smell, or whatever on a traffic stop. That's probable cause. That leads to an arrest, and that's where your numbers get skewed. The higher the probable cause in a certain segment is going to relate to what we're doing as far as that fifty-four percent you speak of.
I understand what you're saying. Except that contraband, I mean, not except that, and on slide nine, where it says if contraband was discovered.
Right.
And you do, you figure out the percentages there. So contraband discovered in one hundred and sixty of the one, of the two hundred and twenty-one white people who were searched. So that comes out to a percentage of seventy-two, seventy-two percent, which is what you said earlier. And it's the same exact percentage for black people, seventy-two percent. Which also leads me to believe, beyond the data that you, or beyond the explanation that you gave, that contraband is being found at the same rate for both white and black people, which in my brain says, okay, so. I guess what I'm trying to say is not including the percentages of the demographics in the city is not giving me a full picture of what these, of what this racial profiling data is telling us, and I would like to have it. And I don't know if we can, oh, yep.
So I helped Chief Seavey construct those ratios because we have been using them in the child welfare system. I actually helped create them for the state of Texas. And they're called disproportionality and also disparity of outcome ratios. And they're very simple formulas, and I can come and help you. And, you know, I'll just bring you the text. And they're real simple to apply, and if that would help. And you want them, I know, you want each one, both on the search, according to those ratios that take into consideration the population, and into the contraband discovery, or maybe on each of these slides, is that, because I can, it'll be very, I can do it next week and help you with it.
If it's, if it's not a lot.
It's really simple. I could probably do it right now, but I can't remember exactly. I don't, I want to control for.
Humble brag.
No. I mean, it's not, I'm just saying. I'm old, I don't have the formula right in my brain.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, in order to be able to understand this data, I would like to have a better picture of it. That's awesome.
The difficult thing about this data and these stops is the state of Texas did not do a good enough job when they did the, when they created the Sandra Bland Act. And so again, we've got a major corridor going through here. Your population will be fine, but it'll, it'll be off because we're stopping way too many out-of-towners, which leads to these stats, but doesn't include the population. And so it's, where do you draw the line? Where do you find the middle ground? And this is, I'm not against whatever we need to do to get the answer for you. What I just want to caution you is, you're not going to get accurate data. You're going to get maybe a little bit better in the ballpark.
Maybe the accurate data is somewhere in between this, this, and what council member Ballinger helps you.
I would be more than willing to work on that. Because we want accurate data, too. That's how we, we do our job, and we do our job well. And so, but again, I'm still proud of the seventy-two percent. We're still doing what we're supposed to be doing as far as we locate a probable cause. We're not just out here picking on people.
Searching everybody.
Right.
So if I can add also, one of the things that we do in the child welfare system, we is, is we look at what you use as heat maps, and that will actually show you what you're talking about, about where those stops are. And so I did look at them last year, and I could see exactly what you were talking about. So that's one of the things, is that might be helpful to get the heat map of where these stops are occurring, you know, both on the highway. And also, there are pockets of criminal activity. That actually change the ratios. And there's one other thing we, we do know, that the census count was off in the very last census, you know, particularly for people of color. And so that is another thing. But I can, I'll be happy to help in any way I can. And council member Fisher, if you want to, you know, you know, get more specific, or if we, if we do this and then you want more, and I know that's, everybody is, everybody's concerned too, but we can do that. And this does match. And this does match child welfare data, which people have been struggling to reverse both the racial disproportionality and the disparity of outcomes. For the state of Texas has done wonderful things in trying to address that. But there are still problems, I mean, it's still very difficult. In fact, they've made serious mistakes in the past by trying to even out the numbers, some children were not protected and other rates went up.
Mr. Bolden had a question, come in.
I do have a question. Um, does out-of-towners skew this data one way or the other and also repeat offenders?
Uh, repeat offenders are just, they're just another tick mark, basically, we're not, I mean, this is stop data. This is, at the very beginning, it talks about, did you, let me get to it real quick. Was race or ethnicity known prior to stop? So only seven hundred and twenty-two times did we say yes. The rest of them, we wouldn't know if they were a repeat offender or not. Now, your first part of your question is, we're the county seat, we're the biggest town, city in this county, and we have people coming in from Serena, Cushing, Douglas, they're going to work, they're going to school. And those are people that are not counted in, in this city of Nakadoches population. Then let's just make it broader, because we have people that come to work from Center, Shelby County, San Augustine County, and the surrounding counties. And so these are people that commit traffic violations, and we make stops on them. So to answer your question, yes, we, it will skew the data. And we just have to live with what we get until we find a better way to do it. And as of yet, I don't know that we've got a better way. And we just talked about different ways to do it, but we still, I don't know that we've got on the same page yet. But we'll see, and we'll give it, they'll call it a try.
In my spare time, I look at, there are police reports, there are ones that come out in the newspaper anyway.
Right.
And there is a lot of stops for individuals that don't have a huge, I mean, a Nakadoches address.
Right.
And also I get reports in the community, every time I leave home, they stop me, you know, so.
Well, they need to come see me. So.
Well, you probably could see them in jail, of course.
Well. That's a different kind of stop.
Well, it's like, some, their sticker expired.
Right.
Yeah, they not going the next day and get a new sticker.
Right.
They're going to be probably stopped in the next week or so.
A lot of times that's, they're given a waiver on that to just get it fixed, and I think it's a ten dollar fee, if I'm not mistaken.
Not for my city attorney.
Mr. Bolden, that was just your ticket.
I think you've got a certain time limit to get that fixed.
One other thing, just a comment I was going to make about not knowing the race or gender prior to stopping someone. I really had a question, issue with that one, until I decided. I spent a half a day riding up and down University and North Street, and it is a big difference.
It's hard to see.
It is.
They're going too fast, we need to do something about that, too.
It was nice, all that difficulty on North Street because traffic was going slower.
Right.
But when you're on University doing forty-five miles an hour, it's, in, in the windows now, it's hard to see in there.
It is. But thank you for pointing that out.
I'm sorry, we kind of interrupted you, you were starting, you started.
No, I just had one more thing. The other thing that I would be interested to, to get that data on, council member Bellinger, is the slide eleven that has to do with the, I guess, whatever corrective action was taken. Citation verbal warning, written warning, written warning and arrest, citation and arrest, and arrest. Particularly because the biggest disparity between the percentages occurs at written warning and arrest. Between, so sixty-six point six seven percent of black people receive written warning and arrest versus twenty-two point twenty-two percent white people. And I, I just think that that's another place where it would be helpful to see that information.
What, what is that, what does that mean? Written warning and arrest?
That's probably, so a written warning for a traffic violation and the arrest could constitute an outstanding warrant. Or marijuana found in the probable cause portion of it, that's two in one.
Can you guess why that's that way? That disparity there?
It's just, no, sir, to be honest, we didn't.
That would be interesting.
I felt like it was two different violations, maybe. One of them is.
Class C and the other one is above it, B or above.
Somebody have, have a warrant when you.
Right, and there's, it's in here. As far as warrants, it's on the next one. And so you're looking at thirty-two, twelve, ten, and fifty-four that had outstanding warrants.
Not a big group, though.
So basically, there's a lot of them, there's a lot more data on violation of penal code, which includes possession of marijuana, DWI, and so forth.
Chief Williams, are there some violations over which your police officers have discretion on whether to arrest or issue a citation? Or do you guys have like a department-wide policy, if this is the violation, it is a ticket? Or if this is, like, say for example, like, driving without a license is a ticketable offense, right? But you can also take somebody in for that?
Well, not anymore, because the jail won't take them.
Okay.
That's been for, pre-pandemic or right at the beginning of the pandemic.
Say the jail could take them and the roof hadn't just caved in on itself over there.
We do have discretion.
Okay, okay.
Normally, we write a, write a ticket.
Are there other violations like that where the, the arresting or stopping officer has discretion on whether to issue a citation or make a, make an arrest?
Yes, the possession of marijuana, if you live in the city, have a local address, we can write you a summons to, to appear in court for a misdemeanor B charge, possession of marijuana. There's other charges, I believe, also, but that's just a good example of jail overcrowding. We're trying to work with the sheriff, and we, the law says we can, so.
Okay, and so obviously in accordance with the law, generally then, are you guys kind of trying to, given jail overcrowding, trying to issue citations for things that you can issue citations for?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Marijuana, you mentioned local address, how do you, as college students, fit into that?
They don't. If they don't have a local address, they probably have to go to jail. It's just based on, are you going to appear in court? Are we going to have to come find you on a class B misdemeanor summons? And it's basically for the.
Good thing college students don't smoke any marijuana.
Hello.
You, you've been silent.
I have been listening to the comments by my colleagues. And I appreciate your commentary on this, because this is the first time that we've had this report since I've been on council. One, my first question is related to the demographics that, and really looking at the number of stops, there were eight thousand stops.
Right.
And you called attention to a skew that would exist because of stops that happened on, on corridors that, you know, my, the loop and those sorts of things.
Right.
Is the loop defined as a state highway? What, what's its definition under this?
As far as you're talking about over here, location of stop?
Right.
U.S. highway, yes.
Okay, so the overwhelming majority of stops, three quarters of the stops happen on a city street. So even if there is a skew, most of our data is for people that are in the city and not going around the city significantly, so.
Right, but again, you have to factor in the people that live outside the county that are coming, traveling to and from work. And I know we have a large population of that.
Right.
There's a lot of people that work over here from, at Pilgrim Pride from Center and San Augustine, because it's a good job for where they're at.
Sure.
So we do have to factor that in. There's other alto, you, you've got both sides of it that are coming in, you've got Mount Enterprise, Lufkin. We have officers that work in Lufkin, so you can imagine the other people that also, or live in Lufkin, I'm sorry, live in Lufkin and work over here. So we do have a lot of travelers in this city.
I guess my, my real question would just be, it's not a question is to under, to better understand what that skew actually is, as opposed to, we know that there's, there's problems with the demographics and the number of the census data. I don't have a way to quantify that, I don't have, council member Fisher and Bolden, excuse me, Bellinger, had specific ways to tell you, you know, this is what we want you to look at. But I would just be interested in ways to figure that out. And then I think the percentages are a good first look at how to understand what this issue is. But I would love for us to get into more statistical approaches that could really compare what the differences are, and maybe those differential ratios get to that. I, I don't know the answer. But, I mean, how can we compare year over year if we're improving? Is a percentage really a good way to do that when you have low numbers? I don't think the answer is yes, I think if, that you would need some other approach. Not necessarily a statistical expert, but we have those in town.
Right.
So I think that might be an opportunity for us to, as a council, from a policy perspective, to be able to compare year over year and see how we improve. Because I know we are improving every day at the police department, and I thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one other comment.
Sure.
I just wanted to say, I so appreciate everything you do. And also, you're going into a much deeper analysis on the reasons for the search and the probable cause. I think that's very, very helpful to all of us. And I really appreciated going to your citizens' police academy and learning, and actually being able to get a hands-on experience of, of how decisions are made and when they're made. And that, that, anyway, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, and thank you for your work, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to seven, executive session. Executive sessions are for city council to receive information and deliberate on matters specified in subchapter D of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Council may reconvene in open session to vote on the matter. And here at, let's see, we'll, tonight's topic will be consultation with city attorney, persuade to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, deliberation regarding attorney's advice concerning pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer on a matter which the duty of the attorney, the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules and professional conduct of the State Board of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. And we will adjourn to executive session at six thirty-three P.M. Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight, and we will reconvene after executive session to take any necessary action. From executive session at seven forty-four P.M., is there any action to be taken from executive session? Oh, I'm sorry, we did, I, I called the executive session for item B. We did not hear item A under Government Code Section 551.087. Is there any action from executive session?
Mayor, I would like to direct staff to draft a resolution to establish a no parking zone on Logan's Port Street north of Wood Street.
Second.
The second, any discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.